All those in favor of Nancy? Okay, all those in favor of Steve? So, what do we do now?
Yeah, we've closed it out.
I'm saying, just to add.
Oh, we do the challenge, is that what we go to? Yeah. Hi, Emily.
Hi.
Okay, so, do, we all, we are Vice Chair. There were two nominations, Nancy and Steve, four votes each, so far. So, now, we're going to... What?
I just asked for a paper ballot, so...
Okay, alright, so we write who our choices and pass them to Marcia.
Just please be sure your name or initials are on there, so that I know how to report, thank you. Thank you.
That's okay, Nancy, you can sign.
Yeah.
You can walk ten steps, Nancy, if you have to.
It's a five-four vote, and Nancy must pass.
Okay, thank you. Alright, and nominations for Secretary.
I respect you.
Other nominations? My nominations, yes, I think you would.
I'll nominate, uh, maybe Hillary.
Okay?
Okay.
Okay.
That's John.
Yep. Okay, any other nominations? Okay, um, did motion close the nominations?
Motion close nominations for Secretary?
Okay. I don't need a second on that.
That's an actual motion.
Okay, I'll second.
Okay.
Um, okay, all those in favor of Megan?
That's you.
Okay. You're all set, Marcia?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, um... We're all set with the elections? Do we move to the consent agenda? Okay, alright, um, the only thing on the consent agenda is the minutes. We need a motion to, um... Oh, was there any extractions from the consent agenda? No? So, we need a motion to approve?
Yes.
The consent agenda?
I'll move approve of the consent agenda as a second.
Thank you. Just a second? Thank you. All those in favor? Okay, great, thank you. Okay, um, board retreat. Well, I don't know if you had something to say, we also got, um, you know, a preliminary agenda in your packet for the retreat.
I would just say that, um, you know, I'm very much looking forward to it, I hope all of you are as well, for the board retreat, uh, it is a week from tonight, actually a week from today, this afternoon, starting at three o'clock. We really want everybody there at three o'clock, um, that's very important, it's being facilitated by Bob Rader, who is the Executive Director of CAPE, Connecticut Association of the Board of Education. Bob is a very seasoned, um, Executive Director and presenter, and I believe has been here, um, right, he has been here before, you know, to Woodbridge, and, um, he's looking forward, um, to being here, to meet all of us, and to facilitate a self-evaluation, also to provide important information on, um, roles and responsibilities of a board member, to certainly answer questions, and to help us, um, also to kind of move forward as we look at our current goals, and to look forward to what goals we may set in the future. Part of the meeting, he'll definitely be leading, and part of the meeting, he will, um, sort of take a backseat and, and, and watch, and, and be a resource as we move through our whole setting process on our own. So, um, it's an exciting afternoon next Monday, so, um, I hope you'll be having on your calendars, and, um, you'll be here three o'clock to get started with us. I do just want to quickly say, I know that some of you have been able to fill out that self-evaluation form. As of Friday, we did not have all of them, in fact, we had, we had fewer than we had, we had less than we had more. If that makes sense, so, we, we need them all filled out, and, um, that really does help Bob to understand everybody's perspective, as board members, so, if you haven't done that, um, please, fill that out, it's not, it's not too long and arduous, and get it to Marcia, she'll get it to them, um, at CAPE.
Okay, um, did anybody have any questions? Marcia's going to provide, um, all of the documentation that's listed here as part of the, um, agenda for the retreat.
Okay.
Okay, um, did anybody have anything else for the agenda? I mean, we can talk about anything we want, we don't have a budget, we don't have to approve it or anything like that, so... Anybody have anything else, though, about the retreat that they want to bring up? Okay?
I should, I'm sorry, so I should just, just add one more item. So, um, review of strategic plan and goals is part of next week's retreat, and, um, that is, the strategic plan is definitely, um, a work in progress, and there's a process to it, so I'll be updating all of you on where we are in each of those goals and areas. Eventually, we'll come out with another updated version, um, in print, that spells out where we are. There's a lot of work going on this summer that we've just accomplished, so, um, I have definitely doing some talking points about that plan as to where we are.
Okay. Oh, Nancy?
Just, I'm hoping that at the retreat, um, it's not just a review, but we have ample discussion time to really talk about the priorities and the strategic objectives, and this is such an important time for us as we prepare for the school year, um, and, um, just, maybe like a 20/80 split in terms of review, and maybe certainly trying to talk about the goals, and how we can be helpful as a board, um, to help execute on those.
I'll try to be very, I'll try to be less verbose, because you've already seen, you've seen this plan, and, and I'll, what I'll try to do is just to hit the highlights and then allow your conversation to, and questions to, to, you know, to spend more time on that.
Any other... Okay, um, committee assignments, um, one of the things that, um, we were going to talk about, I think, at the retreat, is, right now, we have the three committees, we have Policy Facilities and Finance. We also have the option to have a curriculum committee, um, which we haven't in the past. And again, any of the committees, everybody is welcome at every committee meeting, um, you do need to, you know, we need to assign people to certain committees, um, but we can have as many people on a committee as, as are interested. So, what, what we need, though, is, I would say, if it's okay to send it to you, Marcia, if everybody could send Marcia kind of their, um, you know, their priorities in terms of what committees they're interested in. And, and again, if there's one that you, you know, you want to be on no matter what, no matter who else is assigned, then just say so. You know, I'm guessing curriculum will be very popular if we decide that we're going to have a curriculum committee, and we can all nine be on the curriculum committee, so, it's fine. Right?
Oh, okay, the board would function as a committee at the whole for that?
Right.
Which is, has been passed by us.
Right, but we've never had, we haven't had a separate meeting, right? We, we would have a curriculum meeting that would be, or as opposed to...
Prior boards have functioned with a curriculum committee.
But it was more that, we rehashed the entire curriculum. What had happened was, everything we talked to committee on curriculum, we brought back to the entire board, and we ended up re-discussing the entire curriculum committee meeting and, and the board meeting, so...
Okay.
At that point, the decision was made to say, since everyone wants to say it, and let's just make a committee at the whole.
Okay. Um, so, so, think about how this can work, you know, and be effective, um, you know, either as a committee of less than all of us, or, um, you know, with all of us, like what we can do to be more effective in, getting the information about curriculum, all, all of that stuff, so, just think about, because we'll talk about it.
And maybe make sure that you tell Bob Rader that we're going to talk about the curriculum committee, because I remember in the past, he's told us, some schools do it this way, some schools do it this way, so, this is a topic of, of much debate at CAPE, so...
Okay. Alright, um, everybody's clear on the committee stuff, just email Marcia. Okay, um, PTO update? Are you still, you're wearing many hats these days?
Yeah, I didn't, I don't have much.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, everybody needs to speak up.
Push, push your little button so you have your green lights on.
Hello, um, PTO update, I checked in with Jessica Hulsky tonight. She says there's obviously not much going on at the moment, but there is a summer book fair that's going on almost the whole summer. Marge has it going on, um, during the hours of the summer nutrition program. And she's already brought in, I think, $2,000 in sales or something like that. So, Marge is great at that, and we've all been pitching in, helping out, um, and the hours are posted in our new PTO bulletin board that's in the North Lobby, very exciting, and, um...
We came in through the cafeteria.
Oh, yeah, we will check it out.
Check it out.
Yeah, um, and that's really the only PTO update going on right now.
Okay, great, thank you. Did anybody have any questions for Amy? No? Okay. Um, Superintendent Report.
Okay. Happy summer, everybody, I hope you're enjoying your summer, and your families are as well. We'll go through a number of things here, and I'll pause at the end of each one, if you have any questions, feel free to ask. On Friday, um, we received an email, as I woke up and I looked at my, my phone, we got an email from, uh, from the Commissioner's Office that smarter balanced results were going to be released, um, and so Friday they were. And they've released some results, they haven't released all the detail, but, um, as they did last year, they released these, and overall, um, as the state has indicated on their own press release, um, test scores throughout the state were up slightly in math and down slightly in, in language arts. And our scores, our overall scores, we combined all of our grades together, um, mirrors those statewide trends. They do it by the percentage of students who are meeting or exceeding the achievement standards that they've set. And, uh, we're, math, we're at 71.6 percent, which is up from 71.2 the previous year. And English Language Arts, we are 76.4, which is down from 80.1, um, from the previous year.
Okay.
And, and I will just say that I believe that I may have reversed those in the weekly update to you folks, so, um, so, these are the correct numbers. 71.6 in math and 76.4 in English Language Arts, again, that's a compilation of all the grades together, grades three through six that are tested.
I'm, I'm, so, I'm confused.
Okay.
Were our, what were our scores last year? Because I was trying to look, I thought it was 80 in English Language.
It was, 80.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so, so, as I mentioned, I think I may have reversed those numbers in your, in your board update.
Oh, so it was really 76 in?
So, English Language Arts was 76.4, and math was 71.6.
Oh, so math, we went up...
Math went up four tenths of a percent.
Okay, okay, um, and is there any thinking yet on why that, because you said that was like statewide? Everybody went up a little bit, down a little bit, exactly the same?
So, so, so the state is, and typically, they will, they will look at this and say, so, why are those trends there? To the best of their ability, they will look at that, each year, the test gets massaged a little bit in terms of, you know, they, they revise the bank of test questions, um, I can't, I mean, just being released on Friday, I can't give you any kind of a sense of any analysis at this point, we haven't done that for sure to hear, and I think we'll be very interested to hear what the state has to say about those trends. Certainly, uh, they're, the trends statewide are not significantly different, there, there's, you know, minor changes up and down, um, so, and that does happen.
Okay, so, they're thinking it's, if, if it happens to everybody, they're thinking it's maybe test-related as opposed to actual changes in curriculum?
They have not, they have not come up.
Not, not giving us an opinion, okay. Did anybody have any questions about, I know it's preliminary, we get a much deeper...
Right, in September, in September.
In September. Okay, did anybody have any questions, though, about, um...
So, we went down both this year?
No.
So, we went up slightly in math, from 71.2 to 71.6, and in Language Arts, we went from 80, 80.1 to 76.4.
What is the, what was the average for all the other schools?
Um, probably, probably about, I don't have that, I'll put it right here, but probably about like one percentage point thereabouts, um, so, you know...
No, I mean, are you asking what's the state average?
Oh.
The state averages were much better than the state.
State averages were about 55 percent across the board in those two areas, so, we're, we're well above the state average. Last year, we were in the top 10 percent, and we're, we're, in looking at the ranking order of schools, this past year, we're in about the same place, so, we're a couple, a couple points off, a couple numbers off. I, I will say that, looking at a lot of the Durg A and Durg B towns, um, having high scores, which we do have, sometimes it's not easy to maintain high scores, although you always want to do better and better and better. Some of those Durg A and Durg B towns, some of them did the same kind of things, there was a little dip or a little gain, that kind of a thing. In some of them, not all of them, so, not, not so, not so dissimilar from us. Well, does that answer your questions?
Yeah.
Okay, I can, I can get you the exact state average, um, even for the board retreat next, next month, I can get that for you.
Um, and, and just when, when we get the presentation, I know we, we do always get the historical information in that.
Right.
I think that's helpful to see where we're going.
And the state, and of course, historical is not that long, because ESPEC has been used for that many years, but we will give you that, and we'll get, also break it out by grade level in terms of how the grade did, um, and, and the cohort of students moving from grade to grade, in, in terms of how they did, in terms of growth, and in terms of numbers.
I think we also, last year, got a sort of quartile presentation, so we can, how many kids were in each quartile, and how they moved through it.
Right.
So, if the kid stayed within, um, you know, the top two tiers, and we could see who, who, who went down within a tier, or within the top two? And I'm sorry, Nancy?
And, and before you go to that question, just so I, I don't forget, I believe what you're referring to, Steve, was, and then it was presented when we showed the, um, the, the presentation in the spring, which was the accountabilities, accountability presentation, where that's where there was more information available to us, and it showed the growth, and, and you're referring to the growth charts, I think, where it shows from quartile to quartile, my rating.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so...
Does that sound familiar, Steve?
Yeah, I just remember we had kids, we were looking at...
Scale scores?
Scale, I think it was scaled scores, and we had it by quartiles to see the top performing kids, how many of those stayed in the top quartile versus how many weren't.
And we showed you that crazy chart with all the grids.
Right.
Yeah, so that, Bob's right, that's the, um, that's the growth, um, results that we get, and I don't know that those are released yet, like, right now, all we have is just the hard facts numbers and not the trend and the growth, does that make sense?
We have that, we have that available, what we'll do is...
Well, you can still break it out, so just don't give us the means, that's why, I hate seeing means, I, you know, if we can do...
Write that down.
It just doesn't give you much information.
Gotcha.
Okay, were there any other, um, ESPEC questions for now? Oh, the, the parents get the results, do they also get the growth, or they get the growth in the spring, and they get just the flat results now? Because I think it said the letters went out, or no?
We only go, we only get one report from that.
Did we?
Yeah.
You get one report, you'll get your child's individual report, um, and it will, it will show growth, it will show...
I don't know if it's showing previous year's scores and, I don't know if it's showing previous year's scores and this year's scores, or it's just showing this year's scores, I don't know that information. But that, those have not been mailed out yet either, they come later on.
Nothing received, though.
We haven't, yeah, we haven't received them, usually they come, and last year, they came like right in school with starting, and they got mailed out like first week in September, I think.
Okay, so, um, for, for people who maybe haven't gotten them, or haven't gotten them for a while, if we could get a copy of one, I mean, have a view.
A sample student report?
Right.
Sure. Alright, okay, um...
Alright. Moving on, um, so, student data information, um, many of you remember from the May, um, Board of Education meeting, where we reviewed the strategic plan, there were some comments and questions, and some discussion on student data collection. So, just to, just to kind of remind everybody about our student data collection, Beecham has used the tool called Inform at their, at their discretion for several years, which was used to collect student data, and it's internal student data, benchmark assessments, um, STAR, uh, Teachers' College Literacy, math assessments, things like that. Inform was discontinued by the company as of last month, June 30th, we knew that about a year ahead of time, anticipating that, and again, some of this is repeat information, so, I apologize, but, um, the school anticipated that discontinuation of, of the inform collection tool, so, our technology department saved and transferred all the former student data that was in inform to Excel spreadsheets during last year, so we were able to keep that for safekeeping, to go back and review, to access it if we need to, to look at a student's profile. In the meantime, we established the use of Google Sheets during last year, and started collecting information on, on Google Sheets, knowing that inform was being phased out. We did that also because we still were not, at that point, comfortable with any data collection tool that was on the market that we felt we should invest in, and invest means, there's, there's significant dollars in doing that. So, we're continuing to look at data collection tools, in the meantime, we are not sacrificing our data collection on students and their, their continued growth through different assessments that we do during the course of the year. Teachers are familiar with the Google Sheets, they've been using them easily and effectively, and we'll continue to use those until such time that we're able to make a decision, and then transfer all of our data to a new data warehouse, software system.
So, when the classes are forming, the teachers have the data, it's just not in a software package that's really is nice to use?
That's correct, that's correct, right, and we, we've been able to, you know, create those class lists with that profile of student data by an individual basis for teachers to use, for what they should be privy to, they should be privy to only their class, not the whole grade level, so... We're able to create that.
Is there any... Oh, I'm sorry, I, I have one other question. Just curious about data security, and you guys may have...
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, sure, so, that's an, that's an important, it's an important topic. So, so the Google Sheets are just used internally, I probably would have to ask Lisa if she could help me a little bit on that one in terms of, you use it a lot more closely than I do, in terms of security.
So, the sheets are, we have the whole school on one big sheet, but each grade level is broken out by tabs, and the only people that can view each tab are the teachers within that grade level. So, like, a third grade teacher can't see second grade or first grade or kindergarten, they can only see the third grade tab. But, like, Gina and I have access to all of it.
Right.
And the, the drive link is only shared, obviously, with people internally. And they're, um, shared initially as edit, so they can edit the document, and they can input that into it, and then, like, at this point in the year, it's view-only for teachers, so they can no longer change it.
And this is a Google Ads platform, right, it's specifically a Google education platform?
Okay, great, science. Okay, great.
Any chance, did you, um, speak with the high school about whatever they're using, or, you know, with... We, we, so, our long was to, um, we have not talked to middle school and high school about, you know, their, their data collection. I mean, they, they certainly were going into the analytics and assessment tools that, um...
Power School.
Thank you, uh, Power School is, um, is, you know, putting out there, uh, so, we, we need to have it out, we, we've been to the high school, we've, we've viewed, seen the presentations this early in the year, there's been changes to those programs where they actually sort of pulled them back and then reintroduced them, so, um, we, we do need, and we want to talk to them, because if at all possible, we want to have continuity between elementary and middle and high school.
Was that one, and maybe, like, James would remember, is that one of the systems we looked at initially before inform, in U N U? Did we look at, I thought we...
It wouldn't have, it wouldn't have been available at that time, because this, this is a new product, the analytics, and, and, so...
Okay.
Yeah, so, whatever you looked at, might have looked the same or whatever, but it was...
Does anybody have any questions about the data use, so you're still watching for, looking at the high school and the middle school, and then elsewhere?
Right, we really wanted to make a decision this past year, and we just felt like we really could not make a decision based upon the information at hand, and the changes that they were making, and there were very few places, very few elementary schools using that software, and so, we felt we want to, we don't, we feel like we have our data in place, and people can access it, and are comfortable with it, we didn't want to make a major on the overall change to something like this.
I think that's good, because I, I think, you know, I mean, how long we had in form, you know, not as long as we hoped, I think.
Definitely not as long as we hoped.
Yeah.
So, you, you remember, so you folks remember that decision?
We remember in form, well, yeah, and it was expensive, inform was expensive while we did it. Alright, no more questions on that? Okay, thank you.
Um, I'm very, very, very glad to report, because I've been working on this all year long, that we finally have a fully executed MOU for our School Resource Officer. As you might remember from our last meeting, um, I brought to you a recommended, um, MOU that had changes that both police and Board of Ed felt would be able to be approved. You folks approved that in June, and the Police Commission approved it at their most recent meeting, and it's been signed, and we now have it, it, you know, includes things as definitions for the School Resource Officer responsibilities, communication, the graduated response model. Uh, it's also, um, it's also an MOU that's specified for just this year, because we know that we need to talk about that position, and we're looking at that as a year-to-year kind of a thing, at least at this point, so, um, it is, it is done. Signed, sealed, and delivered.
And they started looking at that in 2012, is that...
All I know, all I know is when Dr. Stellup was on the desk, things I was supposed to do.
Okay, are there any questions about that? I know, I don't know if it's in today's packet, but it's been in, well, it was in the packet when we...
The last packet.
So, last.
Yeah.
It was in last month's.
Okay, alright, okay, thank you.
Kindergarten enrollment, um, just to mention that, um, and I'm not going to talk about full school enrollment, because it's too late for that, because there's still a lot of, um, you know, activity, it's only, you know, July 17th, but, um, just to note, people are always interested in kindergarten, we currently have 94 students enrolled for full kindergarten classes. As you might remember, our, um, range of class sizes for that grade level is 17 to 19, and so, we're now at 15 and a half to 16 students per class, um, already with six more weeks to go, so, um, I don't know how many more kindergartners are, are around the corner and lurching in the hallways, but, um, but we, we look like we have the six full classes of kindergartners that we had, um, planned and, and anticipated, uh, back last year when we were looking at our enrollment projections.
And do you have a sense for, like, last year at this time?
Ninety.
Ninety percent? Oh, ninety kids, ninety kids, okay.
I'm sorry, 97, 97, there was 97, there was 97 signed up at this time last year, and 94 now.
And how many do we end up in the whole?
We were about 100 and 100.
Okay, thank you, Marcia.
Any other questions about kindergarten?
Hiring, um, as you've been reading a few of the, um, board updates, um, we did recently fill our vacancy in health through the reassignment of our, one of our third grade teachers, Ariane Buzzer, she's very excited about taking this position, and we're excited about her doing it, and, um, we, we think it's going to be, um, a, a great team, um, as she joins that. So, Ariane's moved to the health area, um, certainly, um, made her third grade position vacant, and so, we have done a very extensive interview process, and, um, lots of resumes coming in, and, uh, tonight, a little later in the agenda, you'll see that we'll be asking you to ratify, um, Amy Beecham. Hi, Amy. As a third grade classroom teacher, so, um, Amy, uh, comes with a great experience from other positions, I'm saying this now, I should be saying it later, but at any rate, I'm just bringing it up, this is part of my Superintendent's report. So, we'll be doing that a little bit later, also, I'm happy to report that, um, Jeannie Charleguio, who was currently a teacher assistant in our staff, and also a certified teacher, is going to be taking the, um, part-time, one-year position as technology teacher, um, and, um, so that will also be asking you to ratify a little later. And we are still working on the process of filling our long-term music substitute, we just put that, um, posting out just recently, and, uh, we'll be looking at that over the next few weeks as we move forward. It's probably a good time for me also to just mention about interns. As you know, uh, last year, we, uh, another thing that, uh, was met on my desk when I arrived here was the fact that our intern program, um, that we had a relationship with, um, was no longer, and so... And so we made contact with University of Bridgeport as well as other universities. University of Bridgeport was really the one that came through to help us the greatest last year, and we had a great crop of interns this past year. So UB did a great job for us. We're continuing that relationship. UB knows we need 10 interns, they have started to send them to us, and we are monitoring that closely, and I will be continuing to talk to the University of Bridgeport placement officer. If it turns out that they feel they can't get close to that, I already have some things in the works to talk to some of the universities to see if we can supplement University of Bridgeport and our last way of taking care of our interns. And by, for those of you who are new, our interns are our substitute teachers, and I will just say that having worked in a number of districts, I truly think the intern program and the intern model is the best model I have ever seen in my other districts. We would have great people, great substitutes, but, you know, a lot of people would come in for one day and teach the third grade, and then you wouldn't see them for three days, and then you come in and do this grade, and then you might not see them for two weeks. The continuity of our interns and the fact that they're very committed professionals who are in the field, growing in the field and getting ready for their own positions, it's just, it's just a real high-quality way of doing this, and so kudos to Woodbridge for doing this for all these years. Bottom line is, we're moving forward in that area, we're seeing, we're seeing some names trickle in and resumes, we're interviewing those people, and things are, things are in process.
What are the schools that have intern programs in Connecticut?
So we talked to Quinnipiac, I don't think of just the air, local area. We talked to Quinnipiac last year, we talked to Fairfield, we also talked to...
Sacred Heart.
Sacred Heart, Sacred Heart. Some places only have so many students to give, and there's some longstanding relationships that some districts have with these schools, so they know that they really, you know, they've been working with, let's say, Shelton forever and maybe Monroe, they know that they don't have enough to even add another district like ours on, so that was one of the dilemmas we had last year. They only have so many resources to give out.
And last year, we supplemented with building-level subs for the year?
Right, so we ended up, when we were not able to, we were too, we were too interns short of what we wanted, and so we hired two building substitutes who worked four days a week, and very much, very similar in terms of nature, they were two great young, growing professionals who were in the field, looking for certified positions eventually, and so they almost acted like an intern in some ways because of the profile of who they were and where they were going. So that's how, and that's how we will also supplement that in the need to round out the numbers we need.
And I know last year, and maybe it was because it was last minute, there was a little bit of a budget impact between interns versus building-level subs for who we need and how we're going to get them. We're covered in the budget.
We're covered in the budget, yes.
Last year, we had a slight favorable, because of the starting times, and we were really absent of an intern for a good part of the year, so this year, we'll see what we end up with, as far as interns and/or building substitutes, before we know concretely what the budget impact will be for the year that we're in.
Is there any questions about any of that? About the hiring? You're going to talk individually when we get down to it, a couple people?
Yes.
We were on hiring, right?
Yeah, I'm, yeah, we'll get to the actual sort of status appointments a little later, sure.
Okay, all right. Bob?
Mm-hmm. The intern program, does University of Bridgeport send supervisors that supervise those interns? Do you know?
They, they have a supervisor. Their supervisor was supposed to come a couple times last year, and just thinking about the fact that there's almost as many as 10, and coming for a couple visits, you can just, you know, they really do heavily rely on the school administration to give feedback to these young professionals, to identify strengths, to identify those concerns, to be back in touch with them. Fortunately, we didn't have any kind of concern, we really had to talk at any kind of length with the supervisor, but supervisors, it's not like student teaching where, you know, they're here on a fairly regular basis. It's not, it's not the same as what you might have thought of, you know?
Well, University of New Haven did send supervisors, so I was wondering how University of Bridgeport handled it?
Not very frequently.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's a responsibility now of your administrative team?
Yeah, yeah, another, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Good question, yeah. So we have just, this is just informational, we have contract negotiations that will be going on this coming year regarding our bus contract, as well as our CILU custodians and secretaries group. These contracts expire on June 30th, and we will be conducting a process of negotiations and getting those contracts to be reissued and updated during the course of the year.
Who would specific, that's a BOA, we do that as a BOA, so...
Well, actually, in terms of BOA, I mean, we know we have a very complex, we're talking about buses, obviously.
The bus arrangement...
The bus arrangement is a BOA contract. It's a BOA contract, but every, every BOA district has a different, is on a different timeline. They're all on different, you know, we're renegotiating this year, and Orange is renegotiating that year, and that kind of a thing.
I used to do it all at once.
It's the four owner operators, which are now three. It's B&amp;B, Sorenson, and...
But we don't do a single contract for the BOA?
No, and so a place like Orange, you know, they have other, they have some other vendors. And I'm forgetting about Bethany, I don't remember their vendors, but I know Winkle, Winkle is in Orange. So it's, so it's not like everybody gets in them at the same time, all four districts and does this as unified.
So are we going to bid it out to like Winkle and other places?
That's one thing we got to talk about.
It has not been bid out, certainly during my time.
And that's...
Something we might want to put on the August finance subcommittee meeting, if, you know, if the board so chooses to move away from past practices of awarding the bus contracts in the way that we played out. I think it should be discussed.
And I think that's a good idea, also considering the potential for the pressure on our budget, and if we do set out an RFP, it might be a good way to consider costs in a more aggressive manner. So do any two BOA districts share the same vendors, or no? We have our three, they have their...
They all overlap.
They do.
So B&amp;B is the largest, right? B&amp;B is...
Right. So we could negotiate a different...
There are other commercial operators like B&amp;B that serve the other district. As Bob said earlier, it's a complex structure because we share service in this. For example, Beecher holds contracts, but those contractors also do Amity runs, and Beecher has contractors that do our runs, but we don't pay those contracts because they're paid by the other BOA district. So again, it falls under a shared service. It's, it's a complex structure, one that has worked successfully, but...
Wait a minute, so there's buses that do runs for us that we don't pay?
Correct. There's buses that we pay that do runs for Amity that Amity doesn't pay. That's the shared service.
So again, if, so someone's providing us a service that we are not contracted for, someone else is contracted for?
Indirectly, we're contracted, because it's a tier that's referred to in the bus tracker contract. The services include an elementary, a middle school, and/or a high school run contained within that contract. So there are some contracts that because of the structure and how it was set up, each elementary school pays certain vendors, but not all of the vendors. For example, I think we have something like 14 buses that come to Beecher on a daily basis, but if you look at the three contractors that we have, we pay something like seven or eight of those 14 runs. Amity pays the other balance of that under the shared service. We're paying the contractors we pay, Amity doesn't pay, but they do either a middle school or a high school run.
This is, and this is, this is not a new, this is not a new, this has been going on for, I don't know...
Since 2000.
I agree with this district.
It's 2000.
When was the last contract? I remember the last contract discussion. When was the last contract?
2014.
2014.
So I do think in the past, we've, I don't know if we've waited too long, or we've, you know, but I'm not sure we started early enough to understand some of the complexities and to consider some of the things that we might otherwise, like, I feel like maybe, you know, we didn't think we had enough time.
Well, I think part of it was, is I was under the impression that it was BOA-wide, and now I understand why, because if we got rid of the vendor who was providing services to Amity, and their contract wasn't necessarily lined up, we would be leaving that middle school, high school without a bus run. I feel like that's why we ended up, I was always in the impression that it was a BOA kind of process.
Well, and it is a BOA type of process, but again, there's different connections for each of the, of the communities.
So if we open this up outside of the three, there could be issues, because Amity, you know, they would have to deal with Amity as well, so...
That's why, that's why, you're a good point, Paul, and that's why, that's why you have to almost look at, which was alluded to earlier, you know, if you were going to go that route, you'd have to look at a renegotiation between all districts at the same time. And I just want to say, this is just to point a fact, we have really, really, from my short time here, we have really, really good owner-operator vendors who provide very careful, good supervision of our kids, very, very, very good service to us. So I just say that because, and maybe not knowing the complete history, maybe that's why left untouched, because of the really good quality, very personalized service that we get from those three owner-operators. So I just say that, I don't, I don't want to dismiss it's just a dollars and cents thing, you know, there's, there's a quality and there's a, there's a service orientation here, doesn't mean we shouldn't be looking at something, because economies are now becoming more important than ever, but I just think that it needs to be stated that the three, you know, Dottie, Chris, and Beth and Brad, I mean, you know, I've got to know them, each of them a little bit, so, you know, in my short time, so, just to say it.
Can I just, any of our special ed that we bus, that's completely separate under ACES, that's not us, we don't bus those, what we do, what we do to...
Some of the owner-operators are doing some of our bus thing, yes. Yep.
All right, so, so...
We can bring a contract to the next finance committee meeting, just kind of look at it.
It's actually a good, it's a good time for me just to mention, when you mentioned ACES more, I just want to mention briefly that, so there's a few superintendents in the area, including myself, who met with Tom Dan, he at ACES regarding, you know, how do we save money in any way possible form? And we're looking transportation, we're looking at transporting students out of the district, students who go to specialized placements, and so I don't know where it's going to end up at the end of the day, but we're looking very carefully at how do towns work together through the coordination by ACES to, without extending time to an exorbitant amount for bus rides, and try to save money by pooling students together who are going to the same place. So it's not going to be ready for September, there may be a pilot in September, and I'm not sure if we'll be the, a district that will do the pilot, but we're working at that, and it's just another way of just trying to see if we can minimize our costs and to keep the same quality of services going.
Okay, have any other, so you'll let us know when we need to start the CIO MOU?
Yep.
All right.
Administrator negotiations, we, I was hoping actually to bring the new administrator contract to you tonight, but we were not able to complete the review by all the interested parties, so that will be coming to you with everything, hopefully that I can actually make those connections, and I should be able to, and that's, that's talking about representatives who represent the administrators group, bringing that to the August meeting for review and approval.
Did you want to wait to give us highlights on that?
So I can give it to them.
It's a pretty minimal change.
So, I mean, the change is, I mean, there's, there's not a lot of language change, there's going to be, you know, the going rate, and we're looking at a 3% increase each year, and that was done in respect of the job our administrators are doing, in reference to what are like districts, what is the comparison of salaries in the area and of like districts, and so on and so forth. There's a few other minor changes that are going along with that. That's usually the biggest part of the contract.
Do you may have any questions? We'll talk a little more about that. All right.
FY '17 budget information, this is about the budget we've just left, we're still not, we still haven't completed everything from last year because it takes time to get everything in order, but we are now comfortably projecting a small surplus, approximately $13,000. You'll see that tonight in a few minutes, but we were looking at a $14,000 deficit last month when we were there. So anyway, so we'll talk about that in a little more detail a little later in the meeting, and I did inform the Board of Selectmen that we were comfortably projecting this, and that this round came to their face, so. Summer school update, as you know, our summer programs are fully in full swing, I'm not going to steal, steal the thunder. Claire and Lisa will talk a little bit more about our summer programs in a few minutes during the BRS update. Administrator retreat, not sure this has been done in recent past, but we decided as administrative team to hold a two-day retreat last week. We spent time reflecting on the past year, on any number of areas, programmatical decision-making, how we went about implementing things we had set as goals, we certainly spent time on that, we spent time on planning for the, for next year, and specifically on the strategic plan initiatives, and having some deep conversation, which is hard to do during the regular day. And we also looked at the area of innovation, an area that we feel that as a school, as a district, it's a ripe area for us to do more with, or at least to carry out the things that we've hoped to do. So I can't, I can't give you a lot more detail on that, except that we're, you know, it's a process by looking at that, we want to look at innovation, we want to look at the things we're already doing in our strategic plan and how innovation applies to those. So expect to hear more about that as, as time goes on. It was, it was a good time, well-spent time.
Just go to a spa, just here in the cafeteria.
Well, we're glad to say that we, the place we went to cost us, cost the Board of Ed zero. We went to a completely free location. Right, Claire?
Yes.
And we had a beautiful look of the, of Long Island, so, so that was good.
Any questions for Bob about the...
So you know, you've heard that our facilities manager, longtime facilities manager Greg Hula, who was here for 13 and a half years, resigned to take a position in Torrington. So Greg's been an integral member of the team, and we held a special lunch for him last past Friday here at the school, and Greg will be greatly missed for sure, especially thinking of all the things he did in terms of, all the normal things you do as a facilities manager, but then during the building project, that's just an amazing job he did. I've appointed our daytime custodian Vito Esparo as our interim facilities manager, until we've determined a timeline and a process for filling this position, and I also plan on discussing this opening with Beth Heller and Tony Gennebees at the Town Hall, just given the fact that, you know, when we have positions that open up, and there's opportunities and the potential perhaps for shared services and perhaps not, but nothing ventured, nothing gained, so we're going to talk about that. Don't know if it's the right kind of position to do that kind of a job sharing, but I think with these kinds of things, it's worth doing that when we have them, so we'll be looking at that. And we'll, once we figure out how we want to proceed, then we will post the position, and we'll give you information about that.
And I know Greg was an integral part of the training on all the new equipment and all of that, but we have other people trained in all of the...
Right, and we, so Al and Vito and Greg spent some time last week getting together.
Your own little retreat, in the little facilities closet, was that where it was?
Well, he was doing that while we were, while some of us were at the retreat, he was in the facilities closet.
Okay.
And so there's, there definitely was some transition time, which is important, and Greg has a phone call away, and could be brought back as, as needed if we, if we needed to do something like that for a portion of the day or whatever, or a weekend or whatever. So hopefully all of you have received and read and enjoyed the end-of-the-year edition of The Bridge, every household in Woodbridge received this, and if for any reason you missed it, I'll bring some copies to the board retreat, and I didn't bring them up here today, but I'm assuming you all received one. So it was fun to put together, and it really is, it's, it's, it gives you a lot of pause to think about all the things that went under in the course of the year, and we didn't capture every single thing that went under in the year, but we captured a lot of it, and so I'm very appreciative to all the members of the administration, as well as a lot of staff members who put a lot of time and effort into compiling information, submitting pictures and all of that, so.
I enjoyed The Bridge very much.
Good.
I liked The Bridge. It used to be Bridges, now it's just The Bridge.
All right. My next item is on Common Ground. We received the request, or I received the request from Rebecca Holcomb recently. Rebecca, as you might know, is the Director of Community Programs for Common Ground. Rebecca was inquiring if I felt comfortable at this point allowing nature care enrollment, that's the one-day-a-week program, to take place for the current students, applicants that we have, there's about four or five applicants from Beecher Road or potential Beecher Road students to enroll in this one-day-a-week program for the upcoming year. Once receiving that from Rebecca, I did speak to her by phone, and we talked a little bit, I'm, I'm telling her that, and letting her know that I'm looking closely, understanding the passion of parents and, and all the other aspects, looking closely at trying to find a solution that meets the needs of both the interested parents and students, as well as meeting the needs of the district. As, as we may have discussed in the original request a few months back, I certainly considered the fact that there were interested students, that parents were very passionate and interested in this program, certainly considered that alongside some of the other considerations of questions about district responsibility and district policy on something like this. So with, with Rebecca's communication to me, I spent some time recently looking further into this. Some things that I will let you know is that there's, there's now no firm requirement or need for a district to have any signed document, which is sign a document, I should say, for a student to, to participate. I also spoke to Commissioner of Education Wensel about the aspects of attendance, and about the aspects of personalized learning approaches as they apply to unique programs like Common Ground. We had, we had a good discussion about that, the commissioner also has recently visited the Common Ground program, Commissioner of Education had very favorable comments of support, which is not surprising, because it's a high-quality program and a program that is, is very unique. The commissioner reiterated, reiterated from her state perspective that nature year is the kind of program that can support the state's position on emphasis to have more personalized learning approaches, and personalized learning approaches is really all about students being able to be engaged in learning experiences that meet their needs because it's of an interest, or it's an area that really engages them, and it helps them to motivate them, and has certainly other positive ramifications from that. So we talked about that emphasis on personalized learning, we talked about attendance, and had a discussion and determined that on a local basis, a district like ours can see this attendance fitting into the category of what's called extraordinary educational opportunities. There are many people who have different viewpoints on that, educational, education, extraordinary education opportunities, but we discussed that, and she was very supportive of that, looking, fitting into that. So, my response to all the information I knew previously, and my response to the most recent information that I have had in terms of conversations, and what it just does or does not have to do in terms of signing anything, and also knowing that parents may go ahead and do something like this because they just feel so strongly about it, that this is something that they're going to do anyway, my, my, my response to this is, is the following. Parents can and can be allowed, they'll do it, they can do it anyway, parents can be allowed to make this decision on their own for their children to register and have their child attend the one-day-a-week program. In doing that, we would recognize that from the district and from the school, within the parameters of the attendance laws, we would recognize that decision and that attendance fitting into an extraordinary educational opportunity. With that, the student would not be marked absent, the student will be marked present, because they're attending something that's within the boundaries of attendance. I think it would be important to, if that takes place for any student, that we would work with parents as best we can, maintaining the strong relationships that we have between parents, students, and school, and that administration would keep in close contact with parents and teacher to see how it's going, to see how we would continue to work with that and to make it work. In a sense, what I'm describing here becomes really an informal type of a pilot, and is an opportunity for us to reflect on this for future decision-making as we watch it play out for the year. I do want to let you know that, whatever question, whatever question you might have about what I'm describing here, I did share, what I just shared with you, with the, with the commissioner, and in understanding that chain, she supported and felt that this was a good way to go at this time, that it made a lot of sense for us at this point in time, knowing that all the factors involved. So, I share that with, with the board, knowing that there has been some conversation along the way here and there, and that's how I would plan to move ahead in that, and to try to keep, keep that delicate balance as we move forward.
So I, I just want to make sure I understand. So, parents who want to enroll their child, and they go to nature year once a year, and are the parents who were interested aware that it's not considered an absence, and they have, even though we're not signing the, the paperwork, I can't remember what it's called.
So they're not aware yet, because my, my conversation with the commissioner didn't happen until this morning at 10 o'clock.
They might be, they might be aware of that.
So, so, they, they will be either aware right now, or they'll be aware, you know, as we move forward to tomorrow, when I, when I, after this meeting, if there's any other comments or anything else to have any impact on that, what I described. So I would be in contact with those parents.
Okay, and all of those parents, even though we're a little later in the process, they're part of the program, they're not late or anything at this point. I mean, you know, enrollment I know is closed for the program.
As I understand it, if your, if your name's in there, and there's, there's no financial, there's no financial burden until, I think, the beginning of August, that's what I understand today. So I think that's, no one's had to put any money forward necessarily, that there have been a lose.
I was more worried that they lost their place, that they didn't, everybody's got their place.
I believe, I think, I think the place, what I, from what Rebecca described to me, people, if they were in on that, they have their place in the program.
Have you, I'm just curious how the kindergarten team felt about this. I can imagine that, you know, while there are children who want to do the program, there's an impact on the remainder of the classroom, which is the majority of the kids in the room, when there's someone who is not present for 20% of the week, missing out on potentially work and other activities that the kids are doing, and what, how do the kindergarten teachers feel about this?
So, we haven't had, especially because a lot of the information that I'm describing has come just recently, since, since school has been out, I have not had a chance to vet this completely with any one teacher or any one team. Certainly had a chance to talk administratively about it, certainly it's, there are, there are questions about how it would actually play out. I think what I'm really, what I'm emphasizing here is that a parent is going to have, a parent can sign their child up regardless of what we or they are thinking, as somebody kindergarten or myself.
Yeah, but they could get marked absent as well, though. Even if, if we didn't, if you didn't approve it, and they just signed them up, well, that's an absence. And if they're missing one day, they'll be over the limit, correct?
Well, if they miss 36 days, they'd be over the limit, which is.
Well, one day a week, I mean.
Right, right.
So they'll be way over the limit, so we'd have to, we're making the exception.
Right, and that's what, and that's where, that's where, that's where I'm suggesting in terms of.
I guess, this is, I, maybe I shouldn't run this, this is just for kindergarten?
No, it's, it actually, it's, it's actually for all elementary grades.
All right, so then, so if my, we let someone not come in, and they fall behind because they're at this classroom, what is our, and then we have parents complaining that we want to hold their son back or, or daughter, how, how do we deal with that?
That's why I'm talking about administration, we need to keep in close contact with parent teacher, and have some kind of way of assessing, is this working along the way?
Is, does the, I don't know any, any in the program, does the program, so, I really, I did think it was just kindergarten, I didn't know this was all grade. So, I'm a little more concerned when you're talking about a fifth grader or a fourth grader who's missing one day a week, whose responsibility is it to catch a child up, make sure that they're all caught up on their work? Like, who's, you know, if a kid is falling behind, is the teacher going to have to spend time with one child who electively is not in the school at detriment to the other 17 kids in the classroom who are coming and now have to maybe not spend as much time in their group on a certain day because there's someone who's fallen behind? I just want to, I just want to know whose responsibility this is, and how are we wording this document with parents?
There, so there is no document, that's what I'm suggesting, that there's, there's nothing, there's nothing that the school is signing, there's nothing that the school is, is adhering to in terms of, you know, a chain of, of things. The, the program itself talks about that they will not hold the school responsible for things that the student may miss on a given day. Now, I, I know, I know.
What if we have a test, so then now the teacher has to spend time with this individual, make out the test, I mean, taking away from the rest of the class? You know, I thought, you know, when you said kindergarten, I said, okay, it's kindergarten, but now fourth, fifth, sixth grade, I mean, it's.
Most, most of the students who we're talking about in terms of the interest is really falling into the K1 and 2 range right now, and that's what we're looking at. And initially, and so some of the, some of the things, some of the points that you're bringing up are good points, these are some of the kinds of things that, when I had my initial conversation with Rebecca, when I had my initial conversation with the interested parents, talked about those kinds of questions, those kinds of practical things that would go on, and at the same time, understanding that there was a tremendous commitment, and that, that parents would do all they could to not have that be a hurdle, and to do a share of their, of their part to make it work.
I think you're kind of questioning this.
Bob, is there a maximum number?
Yeah, oh, wait.
No, no, that's, no, go ahead.
So maximum number, so the program talks about having a maximum of one student per classroom, no more than that. So they.
To a maximum of 3% of the entire school?
Right.
So, for us, we couldn't have more than a certain number?
24 students would be the most we would.
I see, I see that, I just want to make sure, because I interrupted Paul with Aaron, and I'm sorry.
We might need an agreement, because I, I can envision, come the end of the year, someone's missed all the school, and we're trying to say, hey, you know, you're not going to move on, and the parent's like, well, you knew about this. I mean, there's, there's definitely some conflict there, that we should, we need to cover ourselves with something, I think.
So in terms of the, the existing group, we have, is it four in K and one in one or two, or is it, or we don't know?
Actually, I have to say, I, I'm embarrassed to say that I did not bring those numbers with me, I should have, I didn't, I, I'm going to say we've got a, one in kindergarten, a couple in first, maybe a couple in kindergarten, a couple in first, actually, what am I saying? We have three in kindergarten, one in first, one second.
Okay, so.
The first and kindergarten.
Right, before we go on, did you, okay, all right, Nancy.
I just want to say, I'm pretty excited about it, it does, it's not easy, and I think this is exactly what the board should be tasked to do, and we should table the conversation to a thoughtful one at the retreat, because this is in line with Bob's goal for. This is your strategic objectives that we're talking about, which is the district will build partnerships in the community. So I think this is a wonderful opportunity, really early in the year, to think collectively as a board to say, okay, there are some significant things we need to sort out, and maybe we can help provide guidance on making sure kids don't, you know, young people don't lose, you know, the day, or what are the risks involved? Because this is risky, there is a little risk, we all see that, because it's new, and it's a partnership. However, I do want to underscore that this is innovative, this is something you've talked about, this is a pre-approved great partner, the commissioner thinks so. So I just want to underscore that this is almost the safest route we can do to really test out a goal that we've all agreed to in the strategic vision. So I'm excited that, and then suggesting that we table the conversation to really work out some of the case, to help provide guidance to you, Bob, so that parents are satisfied, administration is satisfied, that we can all be sort of thoughtful collectively about it. But thank you for taking a risk in this.
Just, just to be clear, there was never a point in my strategic thought that this meant taking a kid out of the school every week of the entire year. To me, strategic partnerships is bringing people into our building, having after-school programs, other things. It doesn't say, take our kid and send them somewhere else one day a week. I think that there's a bigger impact to the classroom than, yes, it might be a great experience for that one kid, but we're not thinking about the repercussions of the other 18 children that we represent that are in that classroom, that it will impact the flow of education in that room if there's one kid who will be absent every single week. I'm uncomfortable saying that this is a great idea until I hear how it's either been implemented in other places, and what the results are, and whether or not teachers are happy with having a kid not present one day a week. That's not a small, that's not a small amount of time.
And the good news is, you can be a part of creating the solution, which is what the board is about. I think if we don't, we can't defer to some way to the expertise of the commissioner of the state, who thinks it's a great and it's extraordinary educational opportunity, and that falls within the lines. I think we just need to come to the conversation at the retreat to really think about, and it does say, local community, and this.
It's been around for a year, and I assume, Bob, that when you originally looked into it and were making your decision, you were doing some evaluation to determine.
We can't hear you. If you could turn it on and bring it close, that'd be great. Thank you. And by we, I meant the recording.
This program has been around for a year, and, and there's many, many school districts that have participated in it, and Bob, I'm assuming that when you first were asked to approve it, that you did, you know, an evaluation, and looked into it, and did an assessment of the pros and cons of it, and made, and are making a decision based on that, and based on your conversations, you know, to date around that. So it's not that no one has done it, and there aren't superintendents and teachers in school districts to talk to about it, as well as Common Ground.
Well then, I'd love to hear what, how they're handling all these issues, because it doesn't really sound too strategic to me.
So let me just, let me just, let me go back and just reiterate why I'm outlining, why I'm outlining. And again, if I go back, if I go back in time, and my initial, my initial response when it was first, the first inquiries were there, the first questions, the meetings I had, the, the issues at that time was there was, there was a definite need and requirement for the board to, to sign a document, to, to approve the program, so for us to give our, you know, we're approving this, we're, we're advocating it, I can use that word in a sense as well. In a sense, there was no, first of all, we have no board policy that governs this, okay? So we had no board policy, there was a need requirement for the district to approve, there was, you know, one-year program, there's not, not a longitudinal data, it was unclear about how some of the district responsibilities would play out. So, given all of those things, and also some districts that had, you know, entered into it, and some who entered into it and were pulling out of it, there was mixed information there. That's why at that point in time, just given the short amount of time I had, just as the educational leader of the district, I said at that point I was not comfortable, especially if I had to sign on for it. So, in the changes that have taken place, and again, in the context of this, the context is this, parents may decide to go forward with this anyway, regardless of what the superintendent may say, because they feel very passionate about it. Within the context of that, and knowing what I know now from conversations, and knowing that there's not a requirement for a signed document that says we approve of this kind of arrangement of program, I'm responding to this from the perspective of knowing the parent passions, the student interests, but also knowing that we still have questions that, I know I have questions, but I think we have, you know, some of us have questions, you know, what is the district's responsibility? So, with that in mind, the, the way to go, okay, parents are going to sign on anyway, so we'll recognize it in this manner, we will monitor it very closely, we'll use it as our way of looking at this in terms of making a decision for the future. You know, we certainly could actually enact a policy committee, looking at a policy for this at the same time, but I think I'm sure what I'm trying to do is, I'm trying to present something that is probably in, in the area of realistic, because some parents are going to decide to opt for this anyway on their own. I'm not sure if that's any clearer or not, I don't know if that's any clearer or not, maybe not.
No, not really, because they could opt to, opt for it, but if we don't give an exception for the absences, they're, they can do all they want, but they're going to be in trouble by the end of the year.
Right, and the state commissioner of education is suggesting that we go ahead and do that, and consider it as.
I'm sure she has a lot of suggestions that we might not agree with.
Do we know other, Emily, you mentioned there are other schools?
Yeah, there are New Haven schools, there are Hampden schools, Spring Glen, Edgewood, off the top of my head, there's several other schools that have done, that, that have persisted last year.
So I heard that Spring Glen pulled out of the program.
There was issues around the Hampden board, it was, the principal of Spring Glen, I think, is actually a parent and teacher, and so they, they, he himself was supportive of the program. So there was issues with the Hampden school, but I don't know how, where they're, they're at with that.
Bob, could we possibly get some information from administrators and teachers who have had students who have participated? had students who have participated in this program, so that we can, you know, hear firsthand how they feel it's working, having kids out of the classroom? That would be helpful for me.
I'd just like to reiterate, I think this is a bigger, you know, conversation, because we will potentially be building our partnerships. So again, I just reiterate that I suggest we create this as part of your, our conversation on, at the retreat, because we can bring all of that, because it's really hard to make this thoughtful, have this thoughtful conversation at the.
And I think we need to figure out how to have that conversation. We have to be careful not to have a conversation at the retreat.
Oh, understood.
Which is not public.
It's more of a partnership.
So, so we just, we just need to make sure that we have a conversation, people have questions. I think what Bob is, is saying, and I don't want to put words in your mouth or simplify something you're not saying, but it sounds like you're saying that you're looking at this as a pilot, a limited number of children, and a continual evaluation of how it's going. I know common ground has criteria for when they would tell a child they can no longer participate. I don't know if, you know, again, we're looking at it, and, and of course, you know, any parent, when we're discussing their child and any issues, you know, I'm sure that's part of their consideration, if there's any concerns with how things are going. So again, I don't know if you, I know when you initially looked at it, there was some feedback from the primary, I shouldn't say primary, the younger grades. And again, so, so I'm not sure exactly the format we used to talk about, but obviously we do. And again, I think we're also hearing, we need to consider how it's going for the kids in the program, and how it's going for the other children.
And the children.
Well, the other children of the school.
And the staff.
And the staff, you know, I mean, I wasn't trying to.
I mean, I think it could be a good idea. I just think we need to try and hammer out these questions before we do anything.
So I just, I just want to make sure, it sounded like you already said that, that the parents involved, the, the real issue for the parents involved, short of, you know, requiring that the school approve it, if, if they're making that decision outside of that, is the absences. And if we're saying that the school is not going to recognize those days as absences, then is that your concern, that they should, should be, or should or shouldn't, or it just needs to be discussed?
No, no, the way Bob was, I think he was saying that basically we have no choice, the parents are going to do it anyways. Well, we do have a choice, because if we say those are unexcused absences, then the number is.
Right, right. We have a choice, and, and we also have, you know, one of the things I think we need to better understand is kind of the whole absent thing. You know, like, I think we all have an idea about how many, you know, like, is five, you know? When do you get a letter? Is it ten? Is it fifteen? So I think maybe we also need to get some information on, you know, what is our absent, you know, kind of thing? Like, when do we initiate activity based on how many days? And then are there any requirements on us as a school at certain thresholds? You know, is there activity that needs to occur outside the school at those thresholds? Or is it all discretionary decision-making within the school? Do you know what I'm saying? What am I doing?
Yeah, I guess, my only, the only thing I go back to on this is that, and I understand all of the different comments and discourses around this. The commissioner's clearly said to me, Bob, I approve this as an extraordinary educational So if I direct the office to market as an unexcused absence, obviously someone who's got their student in there is going to go back to the commissioner and say, well, wait a minute, you know. I'm just, I'm just.
Can you clarify one thing?
Yes.
When you state that, it's not saying that this commissioner thinks this is the greatest thing in the world. It's definition in public statute of an extraordinary abs, right? There's a term, you're using a term specifically.
I'm using a term, that's fine.
It's defined, right? So you're not saying that the commissioner thinks this is the most extraordinary program.
Right, that is, that is, that is a, the standard boilerplate, one of the, you know, things for absences, right? So, yes, so that's right. I mean, she, she was very complimentary of the program, absolutely, and likes the idea of personalized learning. Yeah, but you're right, that's, right, that's, that's a boilerplate comment versus a, I weighed ten things, and this is the best of the ten. So just from the perspective of the attendance itself, given that conversation that I had, I'm, in a sense, I'm bound to what that, unless the board wants to take that up. I think, certainly I will just also say that the board may want to decide that they want to, you know, enact, enact a policy on this right off the bat. I don't know if that's really the wisest thing to tell you the truth. I do understand all aspects of, you know, like, having something in writing, too. My concern is, at this point, given the questions that there still are, I just want to make sure that the district is not getting so formal that it looks like it's endorsing something that it really hasn't had a chance to really completely reflect on yet, too. So I'm just looking at that from that perspective. And I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to also, so I'm trying to, try to walk that line of, you know, giving an opportunity for us to try something at the same time, not necessarily endorsing it yet, because we don't really exactly know, you know, we don't know, it's only about one year, it's, it's a one-year program, okay? And there's a lot of people who like it, and, you know, it's there. So just trying to walk that fine line between.
Okay. Is there any more discussion? Obviously, obviously, there's things we need to get back to on this, and we have to figure out the right venue for that, so we're not breaking any rules, but anything else for tonight? Okay. That was a lot.
That's the end of my superintendent's report. That one goes down in the books, I think it's the longest one.
I know.
I see you got so many questions, that's why.
I know, your first meeting was so fast.
Remember last July, it was all.
I know. We were like, my gosh, how fast can somebody talk? Okay, so finance committee, I know we didn't.
We do, we do it with the RS update.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I always think that's the enrollment report, you know, like.
Which we're not bringing you this month.
I know, because you're enrolled. I get it. I didn't get it until I was.
I don't like the board meeting here.
You don't? Should we move it? You can move it.
I can't see it.
I know, and the camera is only looking at your backs.
Sorry.
So if you want to move over there, Jeanne's.
No, that's fine. I'm not.
Are you sure?
I'm just putting it on record.
Okay.
Welcome to the new board members and to our returning members. Nice to see you pretty good tonight. Lisa and I are just going to give you some updates on things that are happening in this very busy building this summer. We had many meetings prior to the summer beginning with Al and Bob and the whole crew to determine what rooms are going to be used, or what programs are going to be here, and how can we coordinate it. So there are wings that are being cleaned while programs are going on in other places. But we currently have up to, on a, on a given day, four hundred and fifty students in the building, and many of those do go to E-Day before and after school. So the programs that we have going on, and Lisa and I will talk very briefly about them, we have our special education programs, which are for students that have been recommended to receive specialized instruction in the summer. And we have a four-week program, four days a week. Students can be here anywhere from one hour to three hours a day, depending on what they're coming in for. We have twelve students in pre-K. We have nine in primary, intermediate, resource, they're in self-contained space, and thirty-four kids coming into resource. So we're getting support in reading, math, writing. We have kids in handwriting skills. We are providing OTPT speech for a total of fifty-five students this summer, which is a little higher than ever for our enrollment is isolated there. That's Special Education.
I remember when I first started here, Dr. Stella said that E-Day Road is a school that never sleeps, and I didn't, I didn't understand what he meant. And so I was here for the summer, and now I totally get it. So the summer enrichment program that I refer to is a five-week program, is running from nine AM to twelve o'clock. The total projected enrollment this year is six hundred and forty-two, which is up a hundred and thirty students.
Slots, yes.
Yeah, slots, so, which is up by about a hundred and thirty students from the last couple of years, so that's amazing. There are, there are a lot of activities happening. There's robotics, there's drawing, we've been lucky enough to judge cupcake wars. You did, like, hot dogs or something. Claire did, like, hot dogs or something, Adam. So there's a lot of.
That was really good.
Kale, this is something else.
Yeah, so how do you push food around like a plague?
It was very good, and you had this list that they get home.
No, I'm sure it was very good.
I've done cupcakes a few times, which is the place to be. So there's been a really, a lot of really great activities happening in the summer program, about a hundred and thirty to a hundred and forty-two kids per week attending that program, which is also amazing. We also have our summer E-Day program running before and after camp. The theme this year is turn back time. I was talking to Kathy Solonary, and I was like, so what are you doing with that unit? And she's like, oh, we took a bunch of board games, like Monopoly and Scrabble. And I was like, that's not turn back time, Kathy. I played those games. I don't, I don't think you should call it that. But they're playing all sorts of board games, they're doing less computer time and more outside playtime, and more creative time. And they also have a higher enrollment this year, more than fifty kids in the afternoon in between fifteen and twenty in the morning, which is a nice, a higher number than normal. And she wanted me to mention that Extended Day, Extended Day actually repaired both sandboxes, the one in the playground up in the second, third graders use, and the kindergarten, they repaired and replaced the sand in the sandboxes for us, which is, we're very grateful for us, especially those kindergarteners. I think we got a lot of the, the kindergarten students saying, can you please fix the sand?
Kathy did that. And for those of you that drive in in the morning, you see the cones everywhere, we do share our building with the recreation department in the summer. They're very busy, they're, they have an average of two hundred and fifty students a day, and it seems like as many student helpers, it's a lot of students, high school kids are, junior high kids walking around shirts on, they seem to have a lot of fun. And we have kids going from some of our programs into rec, and then rec's bringing kids back and forth, so we have a good collaboration.
It's going really well. And then the very last thing, at the very end of the school year, there was some curriculum work that happened. We'll be updating you about more of that in coming meetings, but there was curriculum work done by some of our staff around science, language arts, and that's.
Did anybody have any questions before? What, maybe vacation?
I'm going to Disney World next week, actually. Next week.
It was hot.
Yeah, hot. It'll be hot, I know, I know, but I can't.
The Fastpass.
I can't take, I can't take off.
Where do they call it, the Fastpass? Where do they call it?
That's fast.
If you need any hints.
Fastpass. Oh, or you might.
Mr. Disney.
Okay, so are we on finance now?
We are.
Can I jump ahead?
Yes, you can.
Okay, so I don't know, I know we didn't have a meeting, so.
I'm going to do a.
You're going to do it?
And when, and when I, and I'm done finding your question, then I'll go to Al. So, and I'll try to keep this brief, just at a high level, because remember, remember that this is still not the final, final, we are, our final actual budget, you know, numbers will be presented in August, and even those are subject to our auditors at a later point. But bottom line is, this is, we're getting closer, we're fine-tuning. As you can see, the first, the monthly summary report shows us at a surplus of thirteen thousand dollars. That is a welcome place to get to from where we were earlier in the year. Our deficit in the last month was fourteen thousand, so we've made a swing of about twenty-seven thousand. It's mostly really due to final adjustments in the end-of-year payroll, kinds of line items like payroll taxes, pension payments, and insurance for medical insurance. So we've made that turn.
This is the first month they get to use the Black King.
So that's just, that's the high-level picture of that. I don't know, I mean, again, there will be a little more next time, we'll, we'll be fine-tuning August. Any questions out before I move on to the, I mean, really, and the monthly detail is really just, the monthly detail report shows all of the details of that.
And just for, for people who, you know, are new or have, aren't as familiar, at the first finance meeting, you know, any of the details of these reports and what they show, and, you know, what the numbers are, we'll go through the meanings and the formats and all that. Okay, yep, we got it, monthly detail. Any questions on monthly detail?
Are you, do you need to accept each of these reports as I go along?
Oh.
We didn't do that for the extended agenda.
I'm sorry. Yeah, no, because we had.
Move that we approve the summary financial report ending June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen F one, submitted by the business manager.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you.
Move that we approve the monthly detail financial report ending June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen F two, three, five, submitted by the business manager.
Any discussion? Nope. All those in favor? Thank you. On the combining reports?
Combine, if you go just, if you go to page F eight, I'll just highlight this again. So F eight shows, and these, these numbers are pretty final at this point, they're really not going to deviate. The cafeteria balance of, excuse me, excess of revenues of seventeen thousand dollars is really a banner number, and as you'll see in the next report, it really has a lot to do with the number of lunches served, and the quantity, and the success of the program, and, you know, the momentum has really, has really gained, I think, from the quality of the program, and people seeing that. So seventy thousand dollars is really extraordinary, I think it was worth a couple thousand last year, maybe.
Even more extraordinary when you add out the health insurance.
Our extended day is thirty-six thousand excess revenues over expenditures for this year. That's typically, there typically is a decent balance of excess that plays out. Again, this is a self-stimulating program, it's a year-long program, very successful program, and again, this is just one, one more year down the road or something like that.
How do we book? Because extended day still goes on over the summer, doesn't it?
Right, so what you're seeing here is all the programs through June thirtieth. So the SEP program that Claire and Lisa just spoke to, that's not here, because that didn't start until.
This is last year's.
This is the year.
So if someone paid, like, last month for next month.
It's a balance sheet item, so we don't recognize the revenue, so.
Until July one.
Here it pays for July.
Okay.
It stays on the balance sheet, and then we recognize it in July.
Got it, just wanted to. Also, you might be wondering, so what happens to this, you know, this excess of revenues? So we do try, and there's a, there's a great partnership between the extended day director and the program and, and the school, which are, we're all married together. So a lot of these monies will be going back into the school. You heard about the sandbox renovations, so things like that come out of this, but even on bigger ticket items, we bought a new piano for the South Assembly, because we had some really archaic instruments that really needed to go. So things like that have been paid out of this. We are looking at, and we look at some of the South Assembly makeover, we've done painting, we've done curtains, curtain cleaning, so we look at that. We're looking at also things like chairs, new chairs for the South Assembly. Again, looking at the partnership and using these monies to help out the facility, because they're used, extended day uses the facility heavily. So some of those monies will be used towards some of the additional things, some things have already been paid for.
I would just, if you look on the next page, for those that haven't looked one of these yet, on F seven, at the bottom is, is what we've sort of set as ranges for fund balance. So we would never take the excess and just spend it on items. We always make sure we maintain a certain amount of days receivables, just because there are times when we have not come out above budget. So we always leave a reserve in there.
Right.
So the numbers there are just sort of like, we say a minimum of thirty-day average expenses, and once we get above ninety days of having average expenses, we'll spend some of that money for items.
The summer program, you'll see that under special revenues, just remember that the summer program item here is regarding last summer's program. So this, the fund balance ending of seventeen thousand dollars, and there was, there was actually a deficit last year of thirty-five, that thirty-five, twenty-eight will come out of the seventeen, four seventy-nine when we reconcile, or when we do our final August numbers. of the 17, 479 when we reconcile, when we do our final August numbers. But that is last summer's program. This is not reflecting the program that just started in July.
And the days here for 16, SEP is only a five-week program. So a 30 and 90-day evaluation's a little different for SEP because it only exists for a little over a month. So that is that 16 this year.
All right, move we approve the combining financial statements ending June 30th, 2017. F7 to 8 is submitted by the business manager.
Second. Any questions? Okay, all those in favor?
The last one is the school lunch program. The grid there shows the differences from school year 16 versus 17. 17 is this past year, obviously. You'll see the total number of lunches served as being a big driver there. 3,774 is the difference between the previous year and this past year. That's a large number. And you'll see the revenue down below of 20,771, obviously, is a result of that and other things as well. You'll notice the cost of labor. You'll see 7,947, cost of labor, what? That reflects this 3% increase for the five workers in that department. There was also, some of you might know that we added two days of, two workdays to their schedule, to their work year, so that was an additional cost. And then there was also a special project that our food service director was involved in that brought her some additional compensation. So that makes up the 7,947.
So we served a lot more lunches for a lower cost in food. So that's just-
The lower cost in food, we actually, if you look, this truly is a banner blockbuster report. But there's several drivers behind it. And it's really years of work, starting with the cafeteria task force, discussions that happened there, and some of the innovations that came out of that. One of them being, through our consultant, we learned of the USDA agriculture program that's available to districts to purchase their produce that's local. Local means regional within the United States, not local to Woodbridge. So we were able to use those commodities, buy the food, and not pay locally out of our funds for that. So it was a win-win. It was learning. And again, a combination of efforts of the cafeteria task force, the taste testings, the menu enhancements, you know, all the factors added together to really bring this to a good place.
So was that a grant, or was it, it's just a program that we didn't engage with before? So we actually pay for the food. We just, it's just cheaper?
Correct. We did not engage. And I'm forgetting the name specific to the program, but it's sponsored by the USDA. And you need to put your orders in basically 14 months in advance, and they will aggregate, purchase the products. Again, it's not local to Woodbridge. Some of it may not even be Connecticut, but it assumes to the regionals.
And this was our first year? This school year?
Produce, government, yes.
Okay. That's a lot of money when you figure out how many extra.
Move that we approve the quarterly cafeteria report ending June 30th, 2017, F9 submitted by the business manager.
Second. Any questions, discussion? All those in favor?
Move that we ratify the appointments of Amy Leacham at a salary of 59,072, MA Step 6, and Jeanne Charleglio at a salary of 38,090, MA Step 3, both effective August 2017.
Second. Okay. Did you want to?
What I want to say is, yeah. So Amy, Amy says, should I stay or not? You know, I'm here to do the pizza. And I said, why not?
We've been noticing, no.
I just want to say that, you know, our administration has, with teacher involvement as well, as we typically do, you know, when we do a hiring, we have administrators and teachers together whenever possible to do that. We received, well, just, I'm going to talk about the third grade position that Amy has been appointed to. You know, we have a million applications, so it really speaks volumes about Amy in terms of her background. There's just a lot of people applying to that, and we went through that in a very, very thoughtful manner, as we do. And Amy comes to us with teaching experience in Massachusetts, New York, and California. And does some other work. Worked in some publications and some blogs.
Blogs.
So some educational blogs. So she really has really a tremendous background and a tremendous vision for the third grade and her classroom. So we're really excited about her joining us. And Jeanne Charleglio is our, will be our one-year technology teacher. It's a .75 position, three-quarters time position. Jeanne is an outstanding teacher assistant in our district and has been certified and has been looking to get into position. And this is a great one for her. And she'll be delivering technology lessons to students in our technology lab. And we'll be working very closely with James Crawford, our technology teacher.
I have a question.
Yes.
I understand why the tech job is a year because that's because of a week absence.
Yes.
Why is the third grade job a year?
Because the person who's moved into the health position, who's fully certified from the state's eyes, does have one, she's working under a DSAP for next year and has one item to rectify to in order to get that full certification. So in the unlikely and unhopeful event that she is not able to rectify, that she would go back to the classroom. So therefore, we need to-
It's America, we can't perform the duties.
Yeah.
That's what I thought. Okay, I just was, so it's, the anticipation is it's more than a year. It's just-
Right. It's just that we safeguard the district in the event that it doesn't work out as planned in terms of completing, dotting an i, the shapes of the dot.
Okay, thank you. All right, so do we approve that? No, we just have the discussion. Okay, is there any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor? Okay, great. We skipped, are we done with motions?
No, sorry.
Okay, that's okay. Cave Liaison and ACES, of course, Lisa was our cave liaison. So everybody needs to think about, you know, what they would like to do. I think Marsha even included the definition of what the cave liaison's responsibilities are in some of the paperwork here and the policy stuff. So that's something to read over. And in the same email as the committees, why don't you indicate if you're interested in the cave liaison? And then the ACES, that's really almost like a board meeting. It's once a month, Thursdays at noon, like the third Thursday at noon or something.
Sometimes.
Second, thank you. It's really a discussion, you don't approve budgets and things like that, but it really is a discussion about what's going on in ACES. We have been completely absent from this activity for a few years. We didn't have somebody who could make the time and the meetings. So that's another, you know, another thing. We want to make sure that we do have representation. We spend a lot of money in ACES. And so we really should step up our involvement and our understanding and, you know, so. And I know there's people who are interested. So just include that to Marsha. And, you know, we've never had too many people interested, so we'll see what happens. Does anybody have any questions about what those rules are, though? All right. Great. So upcoming meeting presentations for August, we have the document that shows the meeting agenda. And again, this is something that we, you know, part of the retreat. But at least for the first couple meetings, August has a number of items on it. The administrators' contract, the budget. We said in August we would talk about, you know, what are our options for open choice, given our enrollment projections and where we're at. I don't know if class size, I guess class size is part of the open choice discussion because we're not talking about class size in terms of changes or guidelines or anything. So, and then-
Just a point of that, not at that meeting, you're correct, with that those two go hand in hand. I would say, I think we talked about open choice enrollment in relation to class size was sort of part of the conversation.
Looking at where we're at and looking at what we can-
Right.
And again, the other thing, can we know ahead of time whether at this, because we know this is clearly a very late date, can we know whether there's actually anyone interested or, you know, whether it's an academic discussion? Last two questions.
I can try to find that out in terms of, I will talk to them and see.
All right.
Yep. So we actually know when we're making this decision. Is there really anybody in the pipeline?
Certainly earlier in the year, when we look at open choice. We look at it in August and I think in March or something. But earlier, you know, we know there's a pipeline. And now it's a question of, you know, late in August, does somebody want to potentially switch schools? If that's an option. Okay, so if we could find out if there's anybody interested, that's easier.
I think I'm going to add there, Margaret, was just this, that was that, besides that, the class size, you might remember as we were here with the meeting, that the policy committee was going to take a look at the class size, our class size guidelines at some point, just to begin to take a look at that from a perspective of-
Right.
A process or moving forward or-
Right. Each of our committees actually has some work to do when we start those. Policy, we talked about the memorial, you know, that we wanted to get, you know, we wanted to have that.
Right, that was another one.
We have the class size, and then whether or not there's any policy work related to, you know, issues of the valuation of, you know, external programs like the comp round type of it. But all of the committees, I think, have work to do when we start. And once we form those committees, we can do that work.
Yep.
And then the other thing, after the retreat, we often try to finalize the superintendent and board goals at the August meeting. And then I think you were giving us an update on the mission and vision rollout.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So does anybody have anything that they want to, you know, mention about any of these to make sure that when we come to the meeting, we have the information we want? You know, we talked about getting an idea of whether there's any kids who might be eligible for open choice in our district, you know, so that we don't say we have a spot and there's nothing there.
All right.
But is there anything else? Does anybody, and going forward, this is a critical component of the meeting, to make sure that upcoming meetings, we make sure that we have prepared for them in terms of, we don't want to be surprised, we don't want to be missing information, we don't want to, you know, get into a discussion and say, oh, we shouldn't check on X, Y, and Z. So looking at these things ahead of time, and I know, you know, tonight's a little different, isn't it? But anyway, you know, looking forward, we want to make sure we're talking about, you know, all the things we want so that the information that we get in the presentations or the discussion are effective for us. All right, so I guess there's nothing else on that.
I have one question. The SRO review plan, part of that, are you looking at doing that separately?
Oh, no, I thought, where is that?
That's up here.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
My only concern about that one is that, I think the idea there was to have some kind of a discussion amongst the board as to how to proceed ahead with how we want to look at addressing that, knowing that that's going to come early in the year with the budget.
Right. So one of the things we all know is, we have to look at the SRO situation. This year it's funded by the town. And so we have to get all of the constituents involved, you know, whatever we want to do. So however we want to have that process occur is what we need to define. Do we want, you know, a group that includes, you know, people from X, Y, and Z? You know, we did have a number of parents who were very vocal during the discussion. You know, we know who those people are. Again, you know, if we want, they had communication groups. So, you know, we can talk a little about that. But the actual process of, you know, what I have a committee that's doing the process. Because unfortunately, you know, we're already late to the extent that we're going to have to have almost parallel budgets, including it, not including it, because the budget process is done in like November. So we have to have gotten feedback from the people that we think are important to get feedback from really early. So that's why this is on there. We really will talk, we should talk about it in August. So everybody think very hard about how that process should work, because we really have to ramp that up really quickly. Should we do a survey? Should we have meetings? Should we do both? What do we need to do from the parent's perspective? And then the faculty and the police commission, you know, obviously, like, police involved. So anyways, we need to think very hard about that one and very quickly.
So you're looking for that to be a board agenda item in the August meeting where there can be a, call it a roundtable discussion at the meeting on that right there?
Right. And I think more than a discussion, I think hopefully we can actually end with a plan. Like, this is what we need to do. We need to, you know, have this group. These are the people we need to have on it, or the representation. And then how are we going to get the parent feedback? It's very difficult to get parent feedback, you know. But we need to figure out how we're going to do it. Yes, so yes. That was the long way of saying yes. Very long. All right. What else we got? Is that it? Okay, we need somebody to move for a German?
Move on German.
Okay.